And the recording's going, so good evening, I'd like to welcome you and call to order the August 18th Port Arthur City Council regular meeting. And pursuant to the governor's stay at home and stay safe order, the city council will be conducting this evening's meeting via Zoom. So if you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. See if I can get my flag here to show up. All right, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have a published agenda. Is any additions or modifications to the agenda this evening? I'm gonna change a motion if someone wanted to make it to.
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
A motion by council member Ashby to approve the agenda as presented and a council member, council member Luke Corelli seconded that motion. A discussion of this evening's agenda before we approve it. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We have citizen comments. This is for any items on the agenda. I see Mark Turnary from the South Kitsap Rotary Club has joined us and he's here to, we're gonna pat him on the back for spearheading a project related to some benches that have been being donated to the city. So thank you for joining us, Mr. Turnary. So anything you'd like to say this evening?
No, except that I would like to thank the city for the opportunity to work with continuing to improve the pathway and our community.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Mark. And I don't see any other members of the public, so I will close the first citizen comment period. We're to our consent agenda. Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
Mayor, I'd like to move to accept, except the consent agenda as presented.
I assume you meant to approve the consent agenda. And that was councilmember Rosa Pepe and a second by councilmember Clausen. Any discussion of the consent agenda items? The, so the claims were in there and my goodness, 54,000 for the annual software maintenance fee for accounting software, but I guess we can't live without it, so.
No is worth it.
You know is worth it. All right, so all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We have a public hearing this evening before we get to our business item. And that's Mr. Bond, it's an update on the city's development fees. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. Every year or two, we bring forward a resolution updating the city's fee resolution. And this year, we have brought forward an amendment that actually consolidates our hearing examiner resolution that goes all the way back to 2008 and brings it into the city's fee resolution. So we are repealing resolution 19-08 and then bringing those sections into table 25 of the draft resolution. We're also updating the most recent building valuation table. And our permit fees for building permits are based on building valuation. And if you don't have a contractor's estimate or bid, we can use a square footage table that the ICC provides. They provide up to date data, or they update their data every six months. And so we like to stay current with building valuations for making sure that we are collecting enough in permit revenue to pay for our inspection services. And then finally, there's a handful of edits, just cleaning up some organizational issues in the resolution. I will note that the right of way permit fees are being increased. We were pretty out of line with all of our neighbors in terms of how much we charge and how much it actually takes to go out and inspect and to permit work in the right of way. And so that, that was the only real significant jump and brings us in line with both Bremerton and Gig Harbor and Kitsap County. So with that, I recommend that you open the, and then you'll, this is on business items where you'll vote on it a little later in the meeting. I should also note that there's a separate item on the business agenda that is an ordinance, just providing blanket authority for the fees that are contained in this resolution. We're, we're pretty certain that all of the individual fees are authorized in our code, but rather than citing each of those and going through and trying to find those, those citations, we wanted to make sure we had a catchall so that we didn't have to have Charlie spend an hour and a half looking, looking for each fee reference in the code. So thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing related to the city's development fees. Is anyone from the public wishing to testify on this matter? Only member of the public on the meeting is Mr. Turnary. I'm certainly tuned in for that. Hearing no one wishing to testify, I will close the public hearing on the city's development fees resolution. We are on to our business items. The first is 7A adoption of an ordinance accepting three benches donated from the Rotary Club of South Kitsap for additional seating along the waterfront. Mr. Crocker?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, it's my privilege for the second time in two weeks to bring forward an ordinance accepting a donation from the Rotary Club of South Kitsap. Per RCW 3521100, the city council may accept donations of money or property by ordinance. Similarly, Port Orchard Municipal Code 3.90.030, all monetary, non-monetary donations with a current value greater than $5,000 must be approved by city council prior to acceptance. The Rotary Club of South Kitsap desires to donate three benches valued at approximately $9,400 to the city for the purposes of adding additional scene along the waterfront pathway. The staff would recommend acceptance of this, these donations. And perhaps before we get there, I would turn this over to the mayor to add a little more commentary on these benches.
Certainly, we've, the benches will be of the same style that are already down on the waterfront and they will have in them a memorial plaque built into them. Leader Manufacturing is creating those, these, we, we envisioned this project being wrapped up but a couple of months ago and then COVID hit and the manufacturing facility was shut down for a period of time. So Mark has indicated we're a few weeks out on these benches and we figured we should probably bring this resolution before the city council to adopt this. I've had a number of people approaching us lately about donate, you know, wanting to buy benches for the waterfront. And so I approached the Rotary Club about facilitating this for us so that we didn't need to procure these. And they've, they've been accepting donations and then went out and bought the benches. And they, as we all know, Etta Turner Park, which is a park that was created by this Rotary Club and we partner, we're partnering on another lighting project for, so the Rotary Club has, has a longstanding relationship with the city as it relates to this area of the waterfront. So councilmember Ashby?
Yes, I would be pleased to make this motion, but I wanted to make sure that the council understands that I am not a member of the Rotary Club of South Kitsap, the Fun Club, but I did make a financial contribution to this project. So I would not be receiving benefit from it. I actually contributed to it. So with that, if it's agreeable with the council, I will make the motion and vote on the, on the proposal.
Have we had a problem with councilmember Ashby voting on that? Okay, all right, please proceed.
Okay, with that, I move to adopt an ordinance accepting a donation of three benches valued at an estimated amount of $9,336 from the Rotary Club of South Kitsap and use, and the use of city staff resources to install the donation for the purposes of adding seating along the waterfront pathway.
Second.
A motion by councilmember Ashby, a second by councilmember Luke Corelli. And when wishing to comment on this matter, councilmember Deener?
I'm just curious if you can give some specificity for the location of the three benches, or is that not yet been decided?
It has been determined. So one will be mounted into a pair of concrete stop bars. You got, because we didn't create a concrete pad for it, right out on the point there by the Ford dealership. As you, there's a, there's a picnic table already there and one bench, we're adding a second bench. And then you've probably noticed a pad got poured this spring right by the car wash that the, the Ford dealership is building. And two of them will be mounted there and then the city is going to acquire a trash can to put in between the two of them. So those, that's where the other two go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other comments or questions? Mr. Clausen?
Yes, I would just like to publicly thank the Rotary Club for all of their efforts that they've been doing. You mentioned their involvement in Etta Turner Park and we accepted a donation last meeting for some funding to help us with the lighting and now we've got benches. So I just wanted to extend a thank you to the Rotary Club for their participation.
Thank you for the acknowledgement. Others wishing to comment or have questions, councilmember Rosa Pepe? I know you're a member of the Fun Club that helped raise the money.
Fun Club, but I want to thank Mark for not only for attending the meeting, but spearheading this project and following up. So thank you, Mark.
All right, any other last minute comments or questions? Okay, with that, you'll be voting on the acceptance of three benches being donated by the South Kitsap Rotary Club and actually from our community. And with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you for joining us tonight, Mark. So we are on to item B is adoption of an ordinance adopting a new section 2.02.070 to the Port Orchard Municipal Code authorizing adoption and updates to certain fees by resolution. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. The ordinance that is before you tonight, as I mentioned during the public hearing presentation, adds a new sentence to Title 20 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. It is section 20.02070 and reads, "Application fees, appeal fees, permit fees, and other fees and fee policies related to the administration of this title may be adopted by resolution of the city council and should be periodically updated." And so this, this one sentence just provides broad fee authority for the next item that is on your, your agenda, which is our Department Public Works and Planning Fee Resolution. So the recommendation is to approve the ordinance as presented.
Councilmember Luke Corelli?
I move to adopt an ordinance adopting a new section 20.02.070 Port Orchard Municipal Code authorizing the city council to adopt and update fees by resolution relating to the administration of Title 20 Port Orchard, Port Orchard Municipal Code regarding, regarding applications, permits, appeals, and other land use and development services.
Motion by councilmember Luke Corelli, a second by councilmember Clausen. Questions or comments on this matter? In heads shaking sideways. With that, with no questions, I will, you'll be voting on the adoption of an update to certain fees by resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to item C, adoption of a resolution updating the fee schedules for the Department of Community Development and Public Works. Mr. Bond?
Yes, the resolution that is before you tonight, update to the city's fee resolution, it hasn't been updated for a little under two years now. And I should mention that the proposed resolution would take effect October 1st, which gives our clerical staff plenty of time to to input all of these new fees into Smart Gov and to update all of our forms, our application forms, et cetera. And the recommendation tonight is to approve the updated fee resolution as presented.
I would move to adopt a resolution repealing resolution 01908 and resolution 04618 and establishing fee schedules for Department of Community Development and Public Works as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Kachardi made the motion and I've got a second by councilmember Clausen. Have any questions or comments related to this fee resolution? Okay, councilmember Rose Pepe, your question?
Just a quick one, since we've been discussing fees and how to keep them current. Nick, is this something that should be reviewed annually or do we tie it to the CPI? How do we keep current?
Um, we should do it about every year. We're a little over a year at this point. I think we adopted it at the end of 2018 was the last time we touched it. And we've just been too busy to get to it this year, but that, that building valuation table is something that you may want to touch every six months because it typically does go up slightly. We've just traditionally done it once a year.
Thank you.
I think it's just having time to come up for air to, to do that work. So councilor Deener, do you have a question?
No, just a comment. Nick, I don't know if it was new language, but it's worth noting that there's hardship language for people who want to appeal a decision to the hearing examiner. And I think that's, that was very good code that was put into place and worthwhile.
Thank you. Other comments? Hearing none, you'll be voting on the fee schedules for the Department of Community Development and Public Works. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to item D, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Papin Sons Construction for the Maple Avenue Water Main Project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Honorable. Now, the city identified the need to replace an existing six inch AC water main with a new 14 inch HCP water main on the Maple Avenue project, which is part of the well 13 project to provide for transmission of water from well 13 site to the lower zones of the water system or the Maple Avenue project. Staff reported a request for bids and on July 10th and July 17th, 2020, the city's public works firm advertised for bids in the Port Orchard Independent Kitsaps and the Daily Journal of Commerce and on the city's webpage. The request for bid packages was also uploaded to the Washington's Builders Exchange. Originally, between July 29th and August 5th, two addenda were issued and published in the Builders Exchange. And on August 6th, 2020, the bid due date 11:30, the city opened six sealed bids timely submitted for the Maple Avenue project. In general summary, the sealed bids received with all applicable taxes included range from an apparent low of 1.272 million to an apparent high of 1.709 million with the engineer's estimate at 1.257655. After reviewing the bid proposal, staff determined that Papin Sons Construction provided the lowest responsive and qualified bid proposal of $1,272,712,629.50 for the Maple Avenue project. Staff recommends the city council adopt resolution number 025-20, thereby approving contract C058-20 with Papin Sons Construction Incorporated, in amount not to exceed I'm gonna strike that in an amount of 1.27262950 for the Maple Avenue Water Main Project. So in the motion, I would strike the in an amount not to exceed. I've been on vacation for two weeks.
I got that. I moved to adopt resolution number 025-20, thereby approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract number C058-20 with Papin Sons Construction, Inc. in an amount, in the amount of 1.272629.50 million dollars, applicable taxes included for the Maple Avenue Water Main Project.
My councilmember Kachardi, a second by councilmember Deener. Any questions or comments related to this project for Mr. Dorsey? So this is the transmission main because Blackjack Creek divides our city basically in half. It gets the water that is gonna be on the west side of Blackjack Creek or it'll, it'll get us across Blackjack Creek, let's just say that, between downtown and our Melcher Street Pump Station is what delivers it or to that side of the city.
This is one of remain contracts for well 13. You've got the well drilling, the well site improvements, and then these water main improvements, so.
Okay, so a motion on the floor for approving a contract to Papin Sons for the Maple Street Water Main Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We're on to item E, which is the approval amendment number one to contract number 039-18 with BHC Consultants LLC for the well 13 project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. In June of 2018, the city council authorized the mayor to execute contract C03918 with BHC Consultants for the well 13 design permitting bid support and contract administration services for the well 13 project. As a result of that work, the city selected and, excuse me, contracted with Schneider Water Services for a portion of the project. On July 8th, 2019, by change order number one for $4,034.70, Public Works Director directed Snyder Water Services to perform additional drilling to 1,700 feet. On August 5th, 2019, by change order number two, which was $42,308, city council directed Snyder Water Services to increase the well casing by approximately 500 feet. These necessary changes increased the Snyder Water Services construction contract from 1.395 million to 1.976 million and delayed the completion of the drilling work by approximately six months. These changes also necessitated additional consulting services by BHC Consultants and their sub consultants to address design changes and additional construction support. This additional work was originally included, included in the call for proposals for the design work for the well 13 project, but was excluded from the original contract due to the city electing to utilize a phased approach for this project. For example, the address scheduled delays, the city requested BHC Consultants to prepare separate bid packages for the water transmission main at Maple Avenue in the building pump and treatment at well 13. The scope was also expanded, which consisted of the original call for proposals to add PRV stations in a seismic alert system. Additional design changes for the work at Maple Avenue, which is part of the well 13 project, were needed for rerouting water main and archaeological monitoring services that were needed during construction, which came as part of the SEPA process. The proposed amendment number one to contract C039-18 with BHC Consultant reflects the additional costs remaining for the project after the original contract amount had been utilized. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute amendment number one to contract C039-18 with BHC Consulting for the well 13 project design bidding permit, permitting bid support and construction administration in amount not to, in an amount of $337,200, which brings their total contract to 1.255, or $1,255,110. And the Public Works Department has been working with the Finance Department on capturing these costs that are part of the original loan. I think that no, didn't we have estimated that we're $1.8 million estimated at this point? Sure, I think that's the number that's sticking in my head, so we're looking to fill that gap. I think Mike Pleasance had, provided a number, I think it was 1.8 million.
Yeah, so we have been working with the Public Works Department to identify all the funding sources for this project. And we have done that, although a budget amendment may be needed in the future depending on the timing of all these expenditures. Again, well, 13 has been an ongoing project since 2018, so the Budget Authority currently is available in the Water Capital Fund, but we anticipate this could trickle over into 2021 where we'd reappropriate some of that expenditure authority. But with, we have a financing plan with 75% of the total cost of the project, approximately 8.2 million dollars to be paid from water connection fees with roughly the other 25% coming from water operating rates. A big portion of this is the loan that we are going to receive or have been drawing on the $6 million loan in which we have drawn on roughly about 4.15 million dollars. So the rest is coming from fund balance from currently collected CFCs and operating rate revenue to make up the difference to the balance.
And the project has been extended, the loan has been extended to December 31st, 2021.
Yep.
We need to wrap it up.
Draw period, yes. Yeah. Councilmember Clausen?
We are moved to authorize the mayor to execute amendment number one to contract number 039-18 with BHC Consulting LLC for, for the four, for the well 13 project in an amount not to exceed $337,200 for a total amended contract amount of 1.255110.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Clausen, a second by councilmember Luke Corelli.
And the in amount not to exceed should be stricken, correct?
Yeah, I think the, the not to exceed language is in the contract in the staff report. We should strike the not to exceed.
So the not to exceed is for the amendment? So we're dropping that?
Correct.
Yes.
And the contract covers, we had that issue where we were no longer going to use that terminology in an actual recommendation. It just didn't get picked.
Well, with the approval of the second, I would amend the motion to drop that.
Yes.
Conversation we were having earlier today, you know, is when we put this water plan together that funded this 75% from CFCs and 25% water and the budget of it, we, you know, at many times they're, everything's estimates. So we're, we're going back over the total budget and, and now that we know how much this well is going to produce, we could see amendments to these, these percentages and obviously the dollar amounts too, as we get further into the project. So more conversation to come on that. So councilmember Ashby?
Yes, when you're talking about the CFCs and the amount coming from rate revenue, this was all done the last time we looked at rates.
Correct.
It was part of that body of work that we did. So we, we don't want people to think that we're going to be increasing their rates because of this action that was built into the rates at that time.
That rate study, which is ongoing right now, there could be, now, and now we know how many gallons per minute and how much of this rates should be paying for the replacement of this, of existing source and/or current needs. And because remember, right, for the last few years, we've been buying water, a significant amount of water from the city of Bremerton. And then, of course, development is the capital facilities charges and the larger portion of the funding source for this water source that serves us now and in many years into the future.
And we, we do have a meeting tomorrow at 9:30 that we're able to schedule to, to look closer at the percent, percent allocations.
Yeah, any of those changes would come in the next, this next rate study that's coming for you, I think, later this year, first part of next year, Mark? That'll be completed?
Yes.
Which later this?
I'm hoping at the, by the end of this year.
Yeah, okay, that's the goal. Okay, other questions? All right, be voting on the approval of amendment number one to contract number 39-18 with BHC Consultants for the well 13 project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to number F, letter F, approval of change order number three to contract number 077-18 with Snyder Equipment, Inc. for the well 13 drilling project. Mr. Dorsey, it's all you tonight.
All me and well 13. This one's a fairly minor. Only in well 13. This one's a fairly minor addition. So on December 11th, 2018, the City Council authorized contract C zero seven seven one eight with Snyder Equipment for the well 13 drilling project in July 8th, 2019 by change order one for the 4,034.70 that we talked about. City's Public Works Director directed Snyder Services to perform additional drilling from 1,700 feet to 2,010 feet on August 5th, 2019 by change order number two. That 42,308 was added and approved to increase the well casing by approximately 500 feet. The city and the contractor prepared change order three, which provides for the additional work related to the water testing and the final adjustments, increasing and decreasing the amount of various unit price items to reflect the actual quantities and measures. This change orders for the total amount of $20,693.33 and would bring the total contract amount to 1.976 million, which is a 42% increase over the original award. But again, when you're drilling a hole in the ground, there's not a lot of certainty in that. So this, this change order is the final project closeout change order. So staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute change order three with Snyder Equipment in the amount of $20,693.33 to close out the, this contract of the well 13 project.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute change order number three with Snyder Equipment, Inc. for the amount of $20,693.33.
Motion by Councilmember Lucarelli, a second by Councilmember Deener. Any questions for Mr. Dorsey on this change order? Hearing none, you'll be voting on change order number three to contractor number zero seven seven dash eighteen with Snyder Equipment for the well 13 project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Hearing none, motion is approved. We are to our two discussion items this evening. The first is the CFC charges and the cash flow analysis related to that. So I think Randy will need to allow Noah to share his screen because I think he's got a PowerPoint presentation.
Yes, I do.
And I pretty wanted that.
Green, yellow, and brown?
Let's see here, can I share my screens? Great, okay, so we recently took this presentation to the Finance Committee. This is a continuation of the conversation we started several meetings ago regarding capital facilities charges. When Katie Isaacson brought her work forward, we had some discussion and we want to clarify a couple of things and do some cash analysis. So we focused primarily on the sewer capital facilities charge for this presentation. Now, it's important to understand for that, for this presentation and this analysis, we only looked at sewer connections that are anticipated to occur over the next biennial. And of these sewer connections, we excluded any sewer connection that would fall into the category of being credit eligible. And the reason that is important, that means that every sewer connection that is coming into the city is cash, free cash flow to the city for its capital projects and its debt service needs. This is just a table showing again the current sewer capital improvement plan. You all have seen this before. The total estimated cost is $26 million roughly. Of the $26 million, $20.1 million has been identified to be connected to the CC, the CFC portion for all these projects. Mayor, do you want to pause here and give an opportunity to speak to the projects identified in yellow?
Yeah, and so for this exercise, we wanted to, there are projects that would only move forward if, and the force main could have been added to this list also just below it, but these projects can't move forward without sewer improvements. And these aren't projects that we're contemplating in the next biennial budget. So we've excluded these from the cash flow analysis that we're doing and in the projections also that we're anticipating seeing from, from building activity. So we just wanted to clarify, we're really only, there's only really two projects that we're undertaking in this biennial, well, actually only one in the future biennial. We currently have McCormick Pump Station Two at $4.5 million, which is nearing completion. And then we have the Marina Pump Station, and that's really what we're going to try to demonstrate that we don't have any cash flow concerns related to initiating the Marina Pump Station project at estimated at $8 million. And we likely won't be in construction even at the end of the next biennial. I think it will be close to going to issuing the bid and awarding a bid and possibly starting construction about two years from now is where we should be, where you just recently awarded a contract to get us to a 60% design.
So I'm gonna move us along here. A part of our discussion with Katie Isaacson was centered around three policy decisions. One of the policy discussions was how to apply interest as she defined it. And what I'm defining in this presentation is, I'm calling it inflation, because council seemed to gravitate towards that word as we were discussing it. It kind of resonated with most folks as we thought about what that meant in the calculation. So call it interest slash calculation. Under the two approaches, you can apply 50% inflation factor or 100% inflation factor statutorily. And so we've laid out in the table here the impact. Again, what you'll notice is the inflation factor only changes the cost of our current facilities that are attributable to the CFC calculation.
And I think it's important to note too, when the Finance Committee met, their recommendation was for, we currently do 50% interest or appreciation, and the recommendation was to take this to 100% as we move forward. But that's for you to deliberate here in a few, and actually in two weeks, three weeks.
Correct, so I wanted to hop back to this table because under the new sewer comp plan, we identify a toll sewer CIP cost of 50 million if you use the 50% inflation factor or the 55 million if you use the 100% inflation factor. Now, for tonight's conversation, we're not discussing the assumed ERUs, which I've called as the denominator before. So that brings us to a total sewer CFC value of $7,680 if you use a 50% inflation factor or $8,525 if you use the 100%. Again, that's really what this table is meant to illustrate is the delta or the difference between the two assumptions. Scenario A is the 50% assumption, scenario B is the 100%. Again, the difference is roughly about $832 per sewer connection. Now, the table right below that just gives you a quick framework to evaluate scenario A versus scenario B. Under a scenario where we have 46 connections per year, the total revenue generated under scenario A would be roughly 348,000. Under scenario B, be roughly 386,000. So you can see real quickly that the delta at 46 connections in a year is roughly $38,000 difference. Again, that's going to be important as we talk about what assumptions we're going to use in our budget for our next biennial. So this table is meant to be just the quick reference to showcase the difference between the two scenarios depending on the number of connections that come into the city in any given year. So here is the what-if scenario that we have been discussing with the Community Development Department. With Nick's help, we've identified again all the single family connections that we anticipate will come to fruition in 21 and 22, as well as the multifamily connections that will come to fruition. We, again, this analysis does not include any connections that would be credit eligible. Again, all free cash flow to the city. Because what we were trying to demonstrate or at least identify is what kind of funding issues are we going to have regarding the Marina Pump Station? So under scenario A, you can see that the total sewer CFC revenue would come to roughly about $1.4 million per year. Now, I'm gonna pause right here because this is a discussion that the Finance Committee had with the mayor and myself. Part of our sewer obligation is a debt. And so I have estimated the total amount of debt service payments per year. And as part of this analysis, if the CFC revenue is going to pay for the debt service, we discuss the value of pre-funding a debt service account, meaning we would have at least one to two years of debt service payments available in our debt service fund to make those payments if CC revenues do not come in as projected and as forecasted. So I've built that into this scenario just to help us feel more comfortable about the connection forecast risk. Again, the connection forecast risk is all about the revenue. So building in one to two years of pre-funded debt service payments as a part of the plan helps to reduce some of the revenue risk and the impact to our debt service payments on the Marina loan. Under scenario A, you'll see that what this nets is $1.2 million of free cash flow for the project per year under these certain criteria of 150 single family, 46 multifamily at the 50% interest or inflation factor. When we move to scenario B, again, the only difference is we are not assuming a 50%, we're assuming 100%. Under that scenario, we net $1.3 million per year or roughly $2.7 million for the biennial and a total of $326,000 of additional connection fee revenue towards our projects. Again, I'm trying to highlight and showcase the difference between scenario A and scenario B, as that was one of the policy considerations for council. So now, again, the biggest project that we are pointing out on our comp plan list that the city is taking on is the Marina Pump Station at a projected cost of $8 million. Of the $8 million, we have already secured a loan for $4.1 million. We currently have our reserved fund balance of $572 from prior sewer operating transfers in prior bienniums. This money sits in our capital fund and is earmarked for this project. After these funds, these specific operating rate revenues have been spent out of the capital fund, we can say very clearly that all the money in the capital fund is from connection fee revenue. In the past, the capital fund had been combined with some operating rate revenue and capital fees. And so we've had to track that over time, make sure we maintain the difference between how much represents operating rate revenue, how much represents capital. Over the last biennial, we've done a lot of work, this council and the city, to create greater transparency, to separate our utilities into the different funds. And this is just that last step to fully clean up our capital fund so that only capital dollars are in that fund except for when we make a transfer for the payment of some construction, that there's not operating revenue residing in that fund. So with that, you can see scenario A and scenario B, the two projections and forecasts that we looked at. If all that comes true, then we have $2.4 million or $2.7 million for the project, which leaves the remaining balance to be funded from operating rate revenue of either $900,000 or $585,000. Again, this completes the total package of funding for this project. So I just want to pause there to give the council a chance to digest scenario A versus scenario B and the financial impact to our operating fund as well as the capital fund. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Karcherdy?
Yeah, I think this is a great slide. So the last time this council kind of deliberated this whole subject of interest versus inflation, I think this particular slide really kind of, you know, spells it out in the Finance Committee here a couple of weeks ago. I think we had a lot of clarities relates to this, and I think this really has to do with development paying for development and really taking a look at, you know, the investment in previous infrastructure that future development is actually taking advantage of. And so really what this does, it decreases the future liability of our ratepayers. And so I think there was some clarity that the Finance Committee discussed here a couple of weeks ago on why it would be beneficial to go to the 100% inflation or interest rate versus the 50% interest rate. You can see the significant difference on the rate revenue. You know, what's necessary in the future, that 911,000 versus 585. And I think, you know, to be able to explain to an existing constituent that, you know, this really, I think clearly depicts that we're trying to do everything we can to ensure that future development is paying for future development. Chairman Claussen, am I missing something from our last Finance Committee meeting?
No, I think you covered it quite well. And in fact, I think, you know, the important parts in the piece that you said, and I want to make sure that's clear, that the Finance Committee's recommendation is to go with 100% so that we can reduce this impact of the future ratepayers.
And it's important to point out too, this project is supposed to be paid for at a 50/50 split, I believe, correct, Noah? Between rates and CFCs. And so for, if you want to back up to that slide again, it's important to note here, we're basically front-loading, you can go, front-loading that to CFCs because we're in a build mode right now. And this will allow us in future years when those, potentially those CFCs connections don't come in as robustly, that we will have, you know, the ratepayers aren't paying a disproportionate share of this project. So it's, we are showing that, that more than, more than in this scenario is being paid for by the capital facilities charges. And we can back off that and still be true to what the rate study showed in future years, because we're not going to be in the economy that we're in, you know, forever. And this loan is around for 15 or 20 years.
And I'll really add to that, you know, back a couple of slides where Noah touched on the fact that from a conservative standpoint, that $275,000 a year that we're kind of building in, so our projections are conservative that, you know, that we have the cash flow necessary. So down there, that second to last row, it's just to build in that security as much as, much as possible. So I think that may help with the context of his earlier slide.
And I think that is important because as the mayor and I were continuing to reflect on the proposal and the plan, again, if council is supportive of kind of this direction, this is what we would use to build our sewer capital budget. And again, when we look at these single family connections and multifamily connections, these are at a higher volume than we are realizing this year and have historically. But again, we have worked closely with DCD on these projections. He, I don't know if Nick wants to weigh in to continue to add some narrative to the comfort level that we feel that these are true and going to actually be real connections coming forward. But there is risk there. Anytime you're making assumption about how many houses are going to be built, you're taking on risk. And so this really illustrates, we're taking on a 1.2 to 1.4 million dollar risk assumption to complete our Marina Pump Station project. But again, we worked, I think, through the numbers several times with DCD and feel comfortable about that. I don't know if Nick, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, these numbers I feel are still fairly conservative based on the five single family developments that we have heading to final plat. I think the, the volume of lots that are going to be available to home builders is going to be significantly higher than what it has been in recent years. And then we've also now taken in four individual apartment complex permit applications. We just took another one in last Friday. So the multifamily is actually, I think those projects are higher risk in terms of whether they'll actually get built. But the fact that we have four permits submitted in the, I mean, the bar of entry for just submitting those permits with how high the, the plan review fees are, you know, means that these developers are serious about constructing these projects. So as long as the economy continues chugging along at its current pace or a little better, we should be fine.
Nick, of those four permit applications that have come in, how many units would you guess that, buddy, way too?
So there's 429 in Bay Street, which is 39 units. There's the Overlook Apartments, which is 99 units. The Rush Live Work at Sidney and Sedgwick just came in, and we were expecting that to be 54 units, and it actually came in at 63 units, so a little bit higher than what we projected. And the Sedgwick multifamily next to Fred Meyer is 135 units. One caveat, though, is that if any of those permits go out before the end of this year, they wouldn't show up in next year's budget, but they would come in before the end of this year and would be above our existing projection. So there is a risk we missed because we issued the permits before 2021.
So about 360 units is what I calculated there?
Correct. And for the multi, or for the single family, you have McCormick North at 84 lots, you have McCormick Parcel A at you have McCormick North at 84 lots, you have McCormick Parcel A at 53 lots. Steppson Heights is 299 lots in total, but their first phase is only 100. Blueberry Ridge is 105 lots and they're, they should be coming in for final plat here before the end of the year. And finally, the Geiger Plat is probably the furthest behind in terms of development sequencing, but they do have, we're, we're real close to issuing the construction permits for the roads, the sewer, the water line, et cetera. So they will be clearing that site here in the near future and hopefully bringing in a final plat next fall with some houses to follow up.
And how much is that one, the Geiger?
That's 49.
Another 50.
So clearly, if those that you're aware of come to fruition, we far exceeded these projections. So keep our fingers crossed that the economy continues the way it is.
And I want to highlight what the mayor had said previously, what's kind of nice about this project right now is that we are in the design phase. And we will be in design much of 2021. And so we'll continue to evaluate the revenue coming in during 2021. Are we receiving the connections as we are budgeting and planning and thinking about? So that will help us as we kind of watch the funding of this whole project going forward. So with that, these are the recommendations that came out of our last finance committee. The finance committee recommended that we use the interest or inflation factor of 100% that we include an annual CPI automatic adjuster to keep pace with the growing costs. Now, again, while we didn't get into the different methodologies, they did recommend that we use this averaging methodology for determining the denominator. And recognizing that this methodology does not financially constrain our sewer CIP. And it only provides a proportionate share of credit for developers. Again, this analysis did not focus on credit. We eliminated the credit as a part of the analysis. So credit will be a future conversation. And last but not least is that we put together a proposed connection forecast with the help of DCD. And as we've discussed, there's risk in adopting this proposed forecast, but if we feel comfortable, we would go forward and we would build our sewer capital budget around Marina Pump Station, around this proposed plan.
Noah, can you remind the council the last time that we basically updated the, these fees? How many years it's been? Because I want to relate this back to the second bullet point with the committee talked about with the CPI automatic adjuster.
Mark or Nick, you could probably speak to, it's been, well, this is an interim adjustment because we needed to add, and we're in the, we're starting a full review, which will involve rates and all of that, I think, next year. Mark, is that correct?
I don't, I don't think we've done any CFCs since I've been here. We've only done rates.
We haven't done CFCs? Okay.
I know when we did the rates last time for Water Sewer, Katie Isaacson had suggested that, hey, don't forget the CFCs, but we didn't do that as part of the gap analysis.
But I think it was around 2016. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I think it's been about five years for, I think, what the committee discussed. And I think just for, for the council's knowledge, you know, to wait five years and then, you know, to kind of see that you've, you've, you know, you've fallen behind and then have to have this massive rate correction after five years. Let's say it averages 2% a year over five years, you know, that, that can be kind of a an offensive rate adjustment. And so I think to tie this to an annual CPI is just the right thing to do. It's the responsible thing to do to keep up with inflation.
Other comments or question? Are we, unless we hear any objections, we'll, you'll see this as an action item in three weeks at the first council meeting in September. And we plan to bring forward the finance committee's recommendation, which is the 100%, 100% interest and to include the CPI inflation factor. Is everybody comfortable? Councilmember Clausen?
Yeah, just to clarify that you bring it forward at the first meeting in September. How quickly would these rates be implemented following that action?
I'm going to defer to staff. I don't, I know we don't want to wait a long time, but we need time to publish it and then amend certain software and other things. So Nick, how much time do you need to implement?
We, we don't need a whole lot of time for the sewer CFC. That's a much easier process because it's just, it's a couple of figures, not 20 or 30 different forms.
Possibly October 1st?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
In years, in the past, we've waited till the end of the year and given a long window and it creates an artificial activity. People rushing in to beat a deadline.
I was just going to ask, the next question is, at what point does a project get vested? And then at what point will they then have to apply these new rates?
October, once, if they haven't got their permit and paid for their fees, then there's no vest, I don't believe there's any vesting on this.
Correct. Yeah, you have to pay, you have to pay for your permit and pick it up in order to lock in the fee amount.
So in theory, these projects that you had mentioned that have submitted or you're aware of, they will all be invested before these rates are going to play?
Only if, only if plan review is completed and they come actually pick up their building permit, because that's when they pay the fee. So I, I think that maybe one of the apartment projects could have a few of their buildings issued by October 1, but I think that we've only reviewed like two out of 17 apartment buildings in, in plan review. So they're not even ready for approval yet.
And then on the single-family side, you have a plat. We're reviewing the plat and then the, the connection fee is charged at the issuance of building permit on that, on that individual home. So those will be charged with each home. The apartments is a different animal. There's no, there's no, Nick was speaking to.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rose Pepe?
I just wanted to thank Noah and the finance committee for the work on this. I think with the presentation tonight, it's pretty straightforward. And it looks like it's moving us forward to something where as Sean pointed out, we won't be looking at it every five years. We'll be on top of things every year. So thank you to the finance committee.
Okay, for this discussion item?
All right. And I just want to confirm that. So I'm seeing heads nine, so I will use this for our sewer capital budget for the 2122. And so this is our first, our first capital conversation for budget. Great job, council. We've got one project down, one major project. I would say one milestone project too, because the Marina pump station has been on our topic of conversation for a number of years. And it's going to be a big project for us.
Okay, with that, lodging tax. So Brandy, do you want to read the staff report on this and then we'll lead into a discussion here?
So as you may recall, around this time each year, staff solicits applications to applicants to apply for lodging tax funds that are used for tourism and marketing in the city to attract tourists. So at the August 10, 2020 Economic Development Tourism Committee meeting, committee members and staff discussed options on how the city should proceed in funding allocations process for 2021 due to the amount of estimated revenue coming in lower than anticipated and with the significant amount of funds for 2020 not being expended. Some of the comments were, one, we could roll over the 2020, which is allocate of $100,000 awarded amounts for each organization to 2021. In addition, solicit for applicants to be awarded a new projected revenue amount for 2021. When you solicit for 2021, does that mean that the 2021 applicants will be allowed to use funding for 2020 and 2021? Kind of confusing. The second option was to take the awarded amount, not expended in 2020, which is approximately $80,000 and split it between the two years, the 2021 and 2022 financial budget. And then solicit applicants to award a new projected revenue amount for 2021. The thought is to help to spread the award amount over the two years rather than having a smaller amount in the future year in one big fund for one year. The other option was to review funds available and provide a new allocation amount for 2021 and 2022. Fourth option is to delay the soliciting of the applicants to better determine fund balance and allocation. And then, once the council comes to a consensus on that and you agree to move forward with soliciting applicants for 2020 dispersments, should there be limitations set by the council on the use of those funds? Some of the discussions stemmed around seeking applicants, excuse me, seeking applications for applicants putting on events during certain times of months rather than all year round. Require Kitsap County being phased four before expending any of the funds. Another one is set guidelines on additional personal protection requirements for these events as well as marketing. I did ask other jurisdictions to see what they're doing if the COVID had any detour as to how they're going to do their allocations. Bremerton is still in the process of determining how they're going to disperse their funds. The city of Paulsville specifically stated on their application that because of the downturn in 2020, the revenues that were going to be available for 2021 will be reduced by 30%. And then Kitsap County did go ahead and publish their RFP, but nothing in there stated that they were going to do anything differently. And so with that, we did, like I said, mention that we did talk about it at the Economic Development Tourism Committee last week. And I know that council member Ashby had brought up some of these questions as well as some of the other members. So I don't know if she wants to speak upon this topic as well to provide more of an insight as the thoughts behind these questions.
John, give a question?
I defer to back if she wants to.
No, I'm just going to say what, where the conversation went was someone at the meeting indicated that they thought the county was just rolling over their awards from this year to next year. And that kind of started the conversation. Some of our awards last year, the applicants have in fact used those funds, but many of them have not because the festivals have been, they haven't been able to hold anything because of the COVID-19 and the fact that we're in this phase too. So the conversation we had is if, did we want to allow the awards from last year just to roll over? But then we would have another pot of money and we were waiting for Noah to give us kind of an idea of what that dollar amount would be. And then put that dollar amount open for applications. And one of the questions I had is would those organizations that are getting the rolled over money, would they be eligible to apply for the new money also? Or is it more reasonable to just take the money that was not expended this year and add it to Noah's projections and divide it over two? Have a consistency of awards to our organization. We don't know what events the organizations will do next year. We can't just assume that they will do what they had proposed to do this year. So anyway, it just opened up quite a discussion. Jay, do you want to add to that? You're the chair.
Yeah, it was a good discussion and I think this is going to be a good discussion when we get going here. But there was a concern also, and again, anybody on the committee, please jump in, that businesses are going to be really, and nonprofits are going to be really trying to get people back to downtown, back to Port Orchard. And so it might be, might be more to try and invest a little bit more money than just the allocation from this year to try to get people to get Port Orchard back in the forefront, should we be able to get out of COVID and get to another phase. So that it might be, once Noah comes up with some projections, we take a look at what wasn't spent this year, what may come in next year, and then take a look at that for going into 2021 and over 2022 and just not make it a straight divided in half. Is that about covered? Beck?
Councilmember Karchardi? You're muted.
You're muted.
I'm new here, yep. You know, I was unable to attend the last EDC meeting and I've given this subject a lot of thought. And Jay, I really appreciate what you just said. And I'd kind of like to add to it. And where I go is kind of this third option. And I think just to simply roll over funds, it does not resonate with me. I think we are entirely living in a different world. And so just to kind of hit the reset button on that, something that we thought we should have in 2020 just doesn't make sense to me. And so I think we should reevaluate, you know, what our funds are available. And I think, I think you're right, you know, if we feel like we need to invest a little more in 2020 than perhaps in 2021, the share doesn't need to be equal. However, depending on the timing of the events from these applicants, you know, I think that's something that's really relevant. You know, some of the, the leading, you know, spokespeople of hospitality right now, we're not anticipating the return of some of these large groups until, you know, perhaps Q3 of next year. And so again, I just think that, you know, we're dealing with kind of a clean slate right now. And I think we want to, you know, be resourceful for these funds, right? The reason why these funds exist is because people are staying in hotel rooms. And I think if we go too aggressive and, and, and blow through these dollars without seeing the opportunity for, you know, some of these, I guess, just our economy to put heads back in beds, then, then I think the future of these dollars is going to be really, really slow to recover. And so I think we need, I would just recommend that we take a real deeper dive into the, the analysis, you know, kind of as, as bullet point number three talks about. And then to, you know, again, who's crystal ball is, is least foggy right now. But I think, I just think, you know, you're going to have, you're going to have innovation occurring. And I think you're going to have a lot of new ideas, even if, you know, someone's event from last year can occur next year in the same way. I think allow for innovation, allow for, for new applicants to come forward with new ideas and just to see what we're dealing with. So I would be probably less apt to just go to roll over funds and take this opportunity to, to try to do the best of our ability to, to forecast what may become in the future years.
And I'll just share just some of the, the comments that I provided, both the LTAC when, when we went there a few weeks ago and economic. If the council recalls, our previous policy has been to spend or allocate the revenue we received this year for next year's budget for events. So this is a new year with COVID. And we looked and we did some projections on the revenue front. So we are estimating we will receive roughly $90,000 in revenue by the end of the year and we'll spend 20,000 of our budgeted 100. So that's a net positive gain to the fund of roughly $70,000 because of the cancellation of all these events and where we think the lower revenue collections are incoming at. So here we are, we have a moment where we'll end 2020 with, with a high positive fund balance of roughly 200, $200,000. And these are the kinds of decisions that you guys are thinking and that I need to hear from the council as far as what would you like me to budget for revenue going into next year and 2122? And then what are you guys thinking as far as allocating expenditures? So that kind of gives you an idea. Previously, I would have just said, well, we brought in $90,000, so I will put $90,000 on the table for expenditure budget. And then anything else the council wants to do change and let the LTAC committee talk about that.
Noah, what did we bring in in 2019?
We brought in about 110,000, I want to say.
So I'm shocked just to hear you say that you're forecasting to bring in 90 this year.
No, Sean, our hotels are not influenced greatly by our festivals.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe.
Just, it's just hard for me to believe that, that overall occupancy rates locally are only down 20%. I mean, it might be spot on, but it just seems
No, I, because the downtown facility particularly, you know, has a lot of government workers stay there. And the hotel out on the highway, I would think the one that would be more impacted and they just changed.
Flags.
Yeah, yeah. So I would think they would be more impacted because you have to remember, well, it's always been my thought that most of the people that stay in our two primary facilities are ones that have located them on the internet and are, are traveling through.
Right.
Coming here and staying because of, except like the cruise perhaps or the Mustangs.
When's the last month, Noah, that we have year-over-year comparison? Do we have like May numbers in that we compare May 2020 to May 2019?
Yeah, so we have revenue through July. And so that's, that's a fair criticism, Sean. Through July, we have collected $52,000. And so I simply took an average of those seven months, applied it to the next five. And so I simply took an average of those seven months, applied it to the next five. Maybe that's not the right approach. Maybe we need to look into the timing of hotel motel. And identify if there's a similar pattern like sales tax. So maybe the next two months we'll find a real downtick in the collections. Although what we've seen month to month, it has been a couple thousand less per month on the collection front.
Well, with with that information, I actually have a lot more confidence in that analysis. Because I do believe that month over month will probably see a little steady incline, actually. People, you know, there was a lot of things closed, you know, back in in April and May whether or not today. So that that's great information that that's good data.
Councilmember Rose Pepe.
Just a reminder that the council, we still have, and I'm not looking to touch it. A approximately a hundred thousand in a so-called reserve fund. So if we took a look at projection for 2021 of, I'll go eighty thousand just to just to keep low. And and with carrying seventy from this year. And I'm not looking at saying, hey, combine those two and spend it. What I'm saying is I think we have a a healthy balance should festivals get on track. And I'm not optimistic that that will happen until approximately third, fourth quarter of next year. But then we can at least make those commitments of at least of of last year's funds. Now, whether we want to roll them over or not, I think it's a healthy discussion. I I think personally that, you know, we should let everybody apply for new funds and see where they're going. That's my personal opinion, but I certainly would not lower the money money since we have a good carryover.
I'm I'm just confused. I'm I'm not familiar with the reserve fund. We have typically.
It's what Noah spoke to earlier. It's not really a reserve. We we don't allocate the money for spending until a year after we've collected.
Correct, correct. That's that's not a reserve. We've allocated that money out. They just haven't asked for reimbursement yet.
And I'm sorry, I used the wrong, the wrong term. It would assume that we would have no money coming in that year.
Right, right, right. That I get.
So and I guess I want to be clear since we're, I've heard the term roll over several times. In the last 2020 budget, we had approved a hundred thousand dollars worth of projects. And of the hundred thousand, we've spent twenty thousand, so eight thousand were canceled. So when you're saying roll over, are you suggesting that we would have a hundred and eighty thousand for the next fiscal year? Or are you saying, let's hit a restart, all new applications? We have eighty thousand available plus current math today, the fifty thousand. So now we have a hundred thirty thousand available for the next fiscal year.
So what I would say is that people reapply, evaluate them on their merit, looking at with COVID. And quite frankly, I would say, let's take a look at a hundred thousand. See if there's new events, et cetera, that maybe the council would look at. But no, I would not go for spending that money right now. I agree that we still don't have enough data on the impact, even though I do agree with Beck that our business in hotels is different. Than some of the hospitality in Seattle.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would concur with that. And and again, I think we take this opportunity, we're we're living in a new world. And let's let's see perhaps if there's some new innovation out there on, you know, as we as we looked at 2021 on on some new applications. That perhaps we haven't seen before.
I guess I'm going to jump in here. I have a a couple concerns. I have not quite as much of a concern now that I heard the projections for the revenue. And the fact that at least our facility downtown is supported by the government. Through government per diem. But I I I'm wrestling in my mind with the whole idea of how COVID is going to impact. Festivals and this uncertainty of how, you know, what the future COVID is. And it it almost seems to me like it's a combination of three and four in the recommendations. Which is, you know, let's, let's kind of review the funds available. But. Maybe we should wait until the county gets to a certain, you know, when we're at phase three is maybe when we should. Ask for. Applications for its use as opposed to let's just do it because the calendar says now is the time to do it. And even though we know that festivals that typically occur early probably won't happen until COVID. Gets more under control. So I don't know, it's just, it's kind of one of the cart before the horse type of a thing.
In May, though, we need to, from a budgeting standpoint, authorize a bucket of dollars.
We can do that mid-year. We can do that at any time, as long as we budget what we anticipate the revenue to be. That's the important part.
About budgeting, I have a question and I don't know whether it goes to Brandy or Noah. But the agreements that we signed with those nonprofits, is there a time limit on those?
Yes, they have to seek reimbursement, I believe, by January fourth or fifth of 2021. So we give them about a week after the end of the year to get all their claims in.
Okay, so they have, those dollars have to be spent in that calendar year, correct?
But don't they also have to be spent for specific purposes? And if, for example, fathoms of fun, the timeframe for that has already gone by. So it's a little late for them to be asking, even if they waited till the end of the year.
Right.
In fairness, too, to other organizations that aren't nonprofit, well, they're all nonprofits. But, you know, visit Kitsap, the Chamber Commerce, POPS. This, they market Port Orchard and visiting Port Orchard and not necessarily events or festivals. So, you know, if we put a hard hold on this, maybe we put a hold on the festivals. But we should possibly allocate, I mean, we still want Visit Kitsap to tell people to come, visit Kitsap. And, you know, the things that we have to offer here.
I don't think we could put a hold on an agreement that we've already signed. And if if they're able to justify the expenditures and it's the correct purpose, then apply for the reimbursement and we can reimburse them. But.
I think you're missing my point. I'm not worrying. I'm not talking about this year. I'm talking about next year. And they're funding them for next year and their 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 expenses. We do, can we turn Visit Kitsap off in January because?
Well, the problem is is that what do they use those funds for? Like a chamber, they're not using it to pay their light bill. They're using it for advertising. People to come to Port Orchard and is, are they really advertising that now? So I guess it's a question of appropriate use of the fund.
Councilmember Kachardi and then Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
Yeah, no, John, I contemplated the exact same thing you just addressed. I would hate to see us delay the timing of this, though. I kind of like what what bullet point two, you know, states down there in the event of a festival, right? That we may tie it to, you know, a phase four before actually expending the funds. But why I like to stay kind of with the earlier application process is to give these organizations the proper runway to plan. Right? There's a lot of planning that can be done before they actually expend a lot of the funds. And I would hate to shorten that window, right? None of us know what our crystal ball has to say. And so for people that are, you know, trying to be proactive and in planning, I think it gives them just comfort that there's there's that opportunity. You know, but again, if we're not into a phase four, I think that caveat then may maybe helpful that we wouldn't be able to to expend the funds. You know, obviously if the festival couldn't happen for, you know, governmental or authoritative reasons.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying, Sean.
Jay.
I think Sean froze there for a second. Was there another comment? Maybe it was on my end. No, I I was going to say echo what just Sean just said was basically move forward with the process. Because funds won't be expended until events happen. Whether we want to put a caveat on that, saying that that are not, we're not in phase four events can can't go forward. Or we won't reimburse, that's a separate issue. And we can put that into the, I believe, I'll ask Brandy and Charlie the question, that we could put that in there as a caveat.
Yeah, and maybe it's, maybe it's not so specific to phase four, but maybe it's 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 directive. Because who knows phases, they've changed so many times up till now. That maybe there is some change to phase three that allows for a festival, a hundred people and the festival could happen. So just to make sure that it's legally conforming.
Compliant, compliant, whatever the governor's order are to that day.
There you go.
Yeah, the phasing structure, I think, is likely to change.
Yep.
And so, but we could definitely find some language that would be more focused on just compliance with.
Yeah. Yep.
So I'm hearing we should move a process forward. And I mean, the worst case scenario is, is we allocate dollars to events that don't happen. And we're having this conversation a year from now as we're starting the LTAC process. And there's more, hopefully not, but there needs even more dollars that because we just couldn't spend them in the the appropriate manner. Councilmember.
I'm always worried about allocating funding before we get it. That's the challenge. I'm comfortable with the stability factor that government keeps the hotel rooms full, but.
Yeah.
Well, right now.
Here you, we want, we won't allocate more than what we have.
What we're projecting.
Okay, well, but we have in the bank fifty two.
Right.
And and I would probably ask that we we look at, since we're carrying some over, I'm not going to use the term reserves. That we look at no more than allocating a hundred thousand for 2021. Which would be some of the carryover from this year plus projection. But and the committee, as since I I learned the hard way two years ago and I brought a hundred and twenty five forward. That that wasn't palatable, but to the council, but that we at least look at a hundred thousand for next year.
And I think right now that number is extremely conservative. If we have fifty two in the bank and we have eighty that wasn't expended, half of that would be forty. We're at ninety two today.
I, my question is, to be real about our LTAC funds. We have the same events and the same nonprofits apply every year. It's not common that we have a new event occasionally, but not, it's not common. So what I've heard Councilman Kachardi say is moving forward, these festivals may look different. That there may be more creativity, more innovation in how the, what the applications are going to. Actually apply for. And my concern is, is if we move forward right now with the regular, the normal time schedule. I don't think you're going to see anything different from these nonprofits. I think we need to allow them time to develop what they think their programs may look like next year. And give them an opportunity to do that before they actually enter into an application process.
Member Rose Pepe.
The only reason I would not like to delay is because, as we pointed out, that some of the people that are doing advertising for Kitsap. Do that throughout the year, which would start in January. I think the committee could look at it several, several times throughout the year. And Brandy, I'll look at you for, you know, saying yes or no. But I think we should move forward with the process and then probably meet again. To, you know, several times during the year to to reevaluate. I'm wondering whether even some of the, quite frankly, some of the events may pull out, you know, or not submit anything. Until they know, have more information.
Yeah, if I could have said one more comment, and this is again, you know, the 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 last thing that I would like to see happen would be for. A festival to be planning, you know, something in June and for us to, you know, be spending a hundred percent of the dollars they've applied for. On marketing an event too early when we don't know, then the event gets canceled and the dollars are lost. Or I think that would be kind of the the worst case scenario. And so could we build in some sort of a a timeline where we come back to that group and have a little touch base? And and just make sure that we're not, you know, kind of out ahead of our skis a little bit and that we're just, you know, we're just trying to give as much. Forethought to, you know, the actual expenditure of these dollars so we don't find ourselves spending everything in advance to where we, you know, there's really no. No signal that the event could happen anyway.
What I'm hearing, Sean, is you kind of doing a phased approach. And we've, I've heard the comments, you know, Visit Kitsap and the type of marketing they do. And we wouldn't want to not have them continue that during the first quarter of next year. So is there a possibility that the LTAC committee could look at phases? And a certain type of award be made now so that it could continue? And then the festival type operations be made a little bit later? I don't.
No, that's exactly right, right? Just what I said about creativity, change, innovation. You know, we have to be willing to try to look into our crystal balls and change our process as well, right? I think just the rules of engagement have changed.
So, Councilmember Shane.
I just wanted to add that I think this is a good discussion and we need to move forward. And we have to remember that the application process is not easy for some of these innovative groups that want to do something different. For example, when the Port Orchard Film Festival, you know, everyone told them, oh, you should go for a grant, you should get marketing dollars. They could not predict what they were going to do, so they did not apply. I'm afraid that if we are trying to make it, and I understand that we're we're want to be, which is what we're making available. But the process may not translate to the average nonprofit as something that they're going to find easy to apply for.
But if there's no certainty with that, with that nonprofit looking to do an event, where would be the certainty that we would fund it, right? I mean, what's our responsibility to do our due diligence?
I think I'm saying that they are not going to even apply.
Well, I think what I heard possibly is, was the solution is that we move forward with the process. But that only funds ongoing marketing activities. If I've captured what Visit Kitsap does and possibly two other organizations do. And that that the LTAC, there's going to be, Noah's going to allocate a dollar amount in the budget process. Possibly a hundred thousand is a number I was heard thrown out. And a portion of that hundred thousand, the committee would recommend is going to be allocated to ongoing marketing activities. And we're going to, we're prepared to move forward on a process for the, funding those activities. And that we're going to wait until X date to consider applications for festivals. When we have more certainty that these festivals could be held. Is that?
I think that was well phrased, right? Again, we're, we're a body that's looking to invest dollars into the success of these events. And if there's uncertainty that they could exist, then then I think there's uncertainty for us to invest those dollars. And the more certainty there is earlier on, it makes it easier to make that decision. And when there's greater uncertainty, I think we need to protect, you know, tho- those dollars for 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 a future time where there's more certainty. And it's.
That delay might be sixty, ninety or a hundred and twenty days.
That's right, we don't know.
We don't know. I mean, we're making it up every day. Cindy?
Is there any way to evaluate what has been requested, say, in the last year or two when it was a more normal year? How, what the percentage of funds were for just ongoing marketing rather than festivals? Is, can we separate that out? So we have some sort of idea?
Yeah. Tonight, but we could definitely provide it to the committee. And so here's the, you know, here's historically what we funded in ongoing activities. And this is what we've historically and whatever that percentage is, maybe they, that's what. But remember, they're the advisory committee that's supposed to make a recommendation back to you. So you're giving some guidance here on some sideboards on what you'd like to see, so that they're not operating, I guess, blindly.
Right.
So is that, are we, is that, trying to move this along here? We kind, pretty comfortable? I don't think everybody's got exactly what they want, but I think we're.
I I feel comfortable moving forward as the LTAC chair. Brandy, should you hear the afternoon?
Yes, and I'll get together with Charlie offline to kind of discuss how to move forward. But the code is broken out to. Three different types of uses and tourism and marketing is one of its own. And then the other one is operations of funds for special, for festivals and events. So I think we can achieve the the council's goals by.
Because we actually start meeting next month, so that would be a good time. So I I've got enough guidance to bring back to to the council some some options.
Noah's giving us a.
Noah's got a clone now.
Yeah, he's.
One's sleeping and one's awake.
Yeah. So give us a tour of this tool shed, the she shed. All right, he's making me dizzy.
Go figure.
So, all right, well, let's move on here. I think we've given Jay enough guidance here to, to conduct his, his committee and bring back some recommendations to us. Council committees, finance gave a report last week, so I know they're meeting September eighth. Economic Development Tourism, I believe, gave their report last week also. And they're going to meet September fourteenth. Utilities hasn't met, I see their September fifteenth. September, Sewer Advisory Committee is the next night on the September sixteenth. And land use is scheduled for August thirty-first. And I looked at that agenda and bring a lunch and a sleeping bag and, and some snacks, I mean, because you're going to be there a while. Transportation Committee, you met. You need to unmute yourself, Councilmember Ashby.
Okay, because I had, I even took some notes from yesterday's meeting, or yeah, it was yesterday. The first thing we discussed was traffic impact fees. And the committee discussed those and we supported moving forward with the traffic impact fee action to the second meeting in September. There are some additional, some completion calculations that TSI needs to do before we can finalize those numbers. But I believe that the committee felt that it was important to make a decision on that, and it will probably be basically in two steps. And we will start the first step so that the fee calculations will mirror what we've been doing currently, which means basically most of the city will be under one calculation. And then the McCormick Woods projects are pulled out and there's a separate calculation for those. Once in the future that the McCormick Woods agreement, new development agreement is established, we would then not do the two separate accounting processes. The goal is to make both impact fees for the regular city of McCormick Woods be equal. We would like to equalize. So the other thing we did yesterday is Chris Hammer outlined all of the arterial corridor projects and discussed the implementation strategy for those projects and the timing and opportunities for funding grants. In our future meetings, we will look at the centers and the neighborhood streets, and then we'll follow that with preservation. So Scott and Jay, if you have anything to add to the Transportation Committee, please.
Just real quickly, one of the things is that we wanted to get the impact fees implemented here sooner than later. I don't think we have a date, but we didn't, we want people to basically pay for the, the work that's going on and not have it come back on the city. So I would say that we would be looking for that shortly.
I don't have anything to add. I think, I think Becky did a good job talking about what we're looking at and what we will be looking at in subsequent Transportation Committee meetings.
Right. And Nick, did you want to add anything about the impact fee discussion?
I'll just say that I talked to TSI today and they're getting me a scope and a change order so that they prepare the report with both, both the fee using our current methodology as well as the future methodology that will be implemented once we have an agreement with McCormick Woods. And so there's a little bit of extra time and cost associated with that, but I think it's going to be pretty minimal. So once I have that, we will turn them loose on that work.
And would, would they be able to meet our deadline sometime in September?
Yeah, they, they indicated that they should be able to meet it unless we have revisions or questions that require additional work.
Right.
So we're looking at the first meeting in September, the capital facilities charge, work being adopted by council, and then at the latter meeting in the month, the transportation impact fees to be implemented.
Right. And I personally just want to really compliment Chris for the job he did of walking us through all those projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was very helpful.
Yeah, it goes to that and lots of patience.
Yes, he's doing a fabulous job. It's been a good hire. The also important to note, we've, he's completed five grant applications. Three of them are for the Bethel Corridor. And we're not sure what we'll get or what we won't get. And it'll be in early November when we get word and it'll really drive the budget process and where we, you know, implement our, our, our budget and our, and the dollars that we have to spend. So we've got to be a little bit fluid here. Early on the budget process as far as transportation, Noah and I are shaking all the piggy banks, looking for, I keep saying a million dollars. I want to get into transportation, but I haven't seen any firm numbers yet. But, and how those dollars get, whether it's, a lion's share goes to preservation and maintenance or matches for a grant will be driven by what, what awards we get. So we'll be, we'll be talking more about that as we, as we learn more. Anything else for transportation?
You're muted, Beck.
I believe our next meeting will be the, in front of the council meeting on the third Thursday or fourth Thursday. That's, that's when we have normally been scheduled to meet.
So this is wrong on the council agenda and this is nine thirty in the morning.
Yeah, that was just this time to accommodate schedules.
Okay. And lodging tax, looks like they're getting ready to get going. So I think we talked about that enough tonight. Chimes and lights, does any report there?
Next week, three thirty. I'm, yeah.
Week? The festival's next week?
No, next week is our meeting.
Okay.
Three thirty.
All right. Look forward to your report next council meeting. Outside agencies, Beck, do you have anything you want to share?
No, what I will share is we've been pretty quiet during August. Most of the outside agencies take August off. Our next KRCC meeting is September first. Our RPTO meeting happens to be this coming Friday. Other than that, so I will have reports next time.
Okay, I've got two outside agencies I, I have a little bit of news on. And so the first is the, the Health Board. And while we don't have our next official board meeting till September first, I, I do track the active cases daily. And here, gosh, a week and a half ago, we were in the upper nineties flirting with a hundred almost daily. And through the weekend, that tracked down to the forties. And I see today that we're at thirty-two active cases. So that's really, really encouraging. We're not out of the woods yet, but I'm, I'm glad to see that the numbers are going in the right direction because they, they were going the wrong direction for nearly a month. And so I'll have more to report next time I see you. And then Mr. Clausen, I'm not going to, you've, you've got it, so the, is that the, Anatai? How do you pronounce that fairy name? Anatai. So it's in sea trials right now, the Southworth boat. We still, I don't believe, know if it fits in the dock or not. So I think they're going to test that next week. So if we screwed that up, we're in trouble.
Actually, it is this week. They're going to be undergoing a variety of extensive sea trials on Friday. Part of it is around one PM, they are scheduled to pull the vessel into the Southworth Dock to make sure it fits. That seems to be a rather major condition of approval since it was a design built by this contractor, that it fits and that the ramp can lower on it. So we'll find out Friday.
Hopefully that's not sitting in, in, in the bottom there in front of the dock on Friday afternoon. So Jay?
John, do you know what the time of that trial would be?
Well, it's an all-day event. It starts in Everett at nine AM, but they have a variety of maneuvers and different systems to check. They are scheduled to pull into Southworth about one PM. So that portion of it will be at one.
I just, I have time on Friday, so I thank you and make, drop down to Southworth.
Yeah, be down there around one o'clock and you'll get a chance to see it. We're hopeful that it will complete all of the builders' requirements and that if all goes well, we're hoping to have it in our possession probably within the next two weeks. So you will, at that point, see it tied up in Bremerton where our crews will start doing all of their training.
Thank you, John.
Now, I had one other thing there.
Certainly may.
And this isn't necessarily an outside agency committee, but I will share. I have been participating in a number of quote unquote listening sessions with the House Transportation Committee and, and the House Transportation Committee Chair, Representative Thye. And we had one meeting yesterday where he met with all of the transit and the Centripugate Sound. And he made a comment that I picked up on and others did as well, which was just a tad bit of a change. And that is their caucus is planning to come up with an alternative to the thirty-dollar car tabs or to come up with an alternative to establish the thirty-dollar card tab. But the comment that he made is that he has committed to his caucus to come up with an alternative, regardless of what the court case is, to come up with an alternative for the revenue that the state derive off of the car tabs, which was kind of a unique distinction. And we kind of questioned a little bit on, well, there are other agencies and cities and jurisdictions where there TBDs that have dependency currently on the license tabs. And if the court rules that the petition is invalid or the initiative is invalid, that it sounded like, at least from his position, that the state isn't going to monkey with what dollars are currently going out to these other jurisdictions. So more to come. It was just a little bit of a interesting comment that he made, and we tried to pick up a little more on it, but we'll see. And he's, he happens to be the chair of the committee, but he's only one of many down there, so.
All right, on to the mayor's report, which I'm sorry is not very long tonight. I don't have much to tell you. We just, I gave you a long one last week. So just a reminder, no meeting next week. The Port Orchard Cares Grant, we've got thirteen valid applications we're funding. And last two days, we've got one application each day. And I went out today and I knocked on doors and begged people to apply. And I don't know what else to do. And so if you know somebody that has a business with fifteen or fewer employees and they lease their building space, please encourage them to apply. There's a lot of confusion about the county's program and PPE. And you, yes, you can't double dip. But if you use the PPE early on, your rent today is eligible for. And the county has a condition on their grant program that you can't be a sole proprietor. We don't. And they have, you have to have three employees, not including the owners, and we don't. So county has a less than fifty percent success rate on their program. So we're, we're actually, I'm disappointed, but we're doing better than the county's program. So it's tough when you're out begging people to take your free money, so.
We were thinking about applying to cover the rent that we pay the city for our office, but I found out that we have more than fifteen employees.
Your building, well.
No, it's not.
Oh, that's the one, yeah, the one from the city. Okay.
Hey, Rob, have you heard it all? Could this be subject to income tax? Do you know, has there been exclusion?
No, I just saw a Puget Sound Business Journal article to that effect, that it's revenue. And that the people that took the PPE are going to get a nasty tax surprise because it's being, you know.
PPP, but that's a loan, just, you know, the grant was, if there's any, any, any verbiage in there. So it could be subject, it could be taxable income.
Consult your accountant.
That's a good, good answer.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just writing you a check, whether you, what, what the tax liability is, save some of it.
You're not deducted taxes from it.
I'm not taking taxes out of it. Noah's not doing withholding. All right, a couple of meetings later this week for Community Center, one tomorrow internally, and then one later in the week with, with the Regional Library, Kitsap Regional Library. So we, we keep plodding along there. And then the Bethel Right-of-Way purchases, we've come to term on the, on the, the, come to terms on the purchase and sale agreement for the Bethel Right-of-Way. And you should see that early in September, before your body, before this body and later in September, before the county, then it'll go to Title and Escrow and Noah will do his magic to pay for those properties. So that's, oh, and I, exciting headline there. I saw that Paulsbow has five finalists for their police chief, and I was just thankful one of them wasn't Matt Brown.
I hope not.
So with that, we'll go to, we'll go to Director's Reports. Chief Brown, do you have anything to say about that?
I am also thankful. Yeah, today was a pretty big day, actually. I got a couple of things for everybody. Been working with Debbie and HR, so we have interviews for lateral positions on the twenty-sixth. We have eleven people on our list. We are hoping to take two off of there at least, but we've also committed to making sure we get the right people. So if all eleven are not the right people, we'll continue looking. But I would imagine with everything going on across the water, that we'll have some good applicants coming. We are up to fifteen percent done with accreditation. We have a number of heavy lists that we need to do for the rest of the, the pieces, but we're getting there. The other big news for today is that we have been in a, a search for deputy chief for about three to four months to replace Dale Schuster, who is retiring at the end of the year. And we were able to convince Donna Main to step up and be our deputy chief. So we will be working as a team to figure out the rest of that piece and bring the council some options. But I'm pretty proud of her and I, I think she's going to be a great addition to our command staff team. And that also provides us to promote a third sergeant. So we'll have three new sergeants and a brand new deputy chief in the span of five months. So I really thank the council and the mayor for all the support to get us here. And that's all I've got for today.
That's exciting, those. I've, I've known Donna for most of my life. She, her and I grew up friends with my sister and, and so I've, I've known her since high school. And great, great to have her in our city and someone who's grown up in our community, lives in our community and has worked through the ranks and become a leader in our police department. I think it's phenomenal. She cannot participate in the budget process. I want no tears.
She's lead.
Getting money and because these guys are all softies, so.
Noted.
Was she the officer that recently got an award?
Uh, yeah, she received an award from the Kitsap Sun for, or no, sorry, the, the Port Orchard Independent for Officer of the Year.
Yeah, she came and gave us that very passionate speech about the navigator program, if you remember, recall.
I've, I've seen her in action and have been impressed.
Yeah. And, and so our, our third sergeant is Andy Brandon. And he was, if you guys recall, he was Officer of the Year last year. So we've got quite the, the group of young leaders that are coming up, and I'm looking forward to the continuing progress that we're making.
Fabulous. Thanks for sharing that, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Noah, how are things in the she shed?
You're muted, Noah.
Put the axe down.
The she shed. I think I lost my Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Well, I got the volume back. Sure, you make me follow the chief after he has all these great news and things to talk about. The only thing I wanted to mention to the council is that we are continuing to work through our organizational assessment. We have a big week this week with lots of interviews individually and with departments. So again, we expect that report to come to council into September. So we're expecting a lot of good information, log of thoughts, planning and giving us guidance for wherever you need to go as an organization.
Growing organization, so that's all for me. Okay. Go back to the hedge trimmers. Mr. Dorsey, you're fresh back from vacation, got a little tan. But what words of wisdom do you have for us tonight?
Don't go on vacation.
Your budget's not done, I know that.
Nothing, it's not, it's just putting out crazy.
Nothing. It's, it's just putting out crazy fires all the last two days. So. And then trying to meet all of Noah's meeting requirements. So no, I have, I have nothing.
Nothing? Okay.
Why he's scheduling all these meetings when we're supposed to be working on budgets beyond me. But anyway, I have nothing.
You have nothing. All right. Nick, I'm sure your budget's done.
It's just about, but I'm going to ignore Mark's device, advice and go on vacation next week. So I'll be out of the office and that's all.
Okay. You don't want to talk about either one of the hearing examiners? They issued, I know you emailed, emailed one to the council and I think the Lighthouse site or Cheer site was also issued on Friday.
I suspect the correct answer to this is yes, I do want to talk about those things. And so the hearing examiner's been busy. We've issued three decisions in the last couple of weeks. And I believe we have one more still to, to come. So the 429 Bay Street property, the McCormick Woods parcel A property and a cell phone tower out on Glenwood Road have all been approved and they are still in the appeal period. So consistent with previous advice, we shouldn't be discussing those until the appeal, appeal period is, has concluded.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So Charlie?
Enter our port this evening.
Wow. Andy, your last but not least.
Um, I don't think I have anything for you tonight.
Okay. All right. That was easy. Well, we have no citizens present, so at least I don't see any on the video. So with no citizen comment, I am going to adjourn the meeting. Enjoy your couple of weeks off and we'll see you back in September.